About as ready as I'll ever be.
All right. All right, good evening, welcome to the Thursday, September 20th meeting of the 2018 of the Miss Boylston Zoning Board of Appeals. Let's see, first on the agenda, I believe we have some minutes to review. Let's first talk about the July 27th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 27th.
And that's an executive session, I believe?
There is two.
They both, they both are, aren't they?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the July 27th, 2018. Has written unless there are some, unless someone has any changes.
I have no changes.
I have only one question on that. Did we take any vote on that day?
On what?
On that executive session. The last vote, we did took some votes.
So the, the only vote that I remember is the vote-
We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be out loud saying anything.
Right, so we can't talk substantively.
Substantively.
But we, we voted to enter into executive session and we voted to cancel.
Other than that?
Nothing else.
No.
Okay, okay, I do remember what-
Who was all this guy?
I do remember.
Yeah, I have to say this way or that way sometimes?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sounds good. Second.
That's a second. Okay, all in favor, do you approve those July 27 minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I make a motion to approve.
Zero, zero.
I make a motion to approve the August 16th executive session minutes as written unless someone on the board has any changes.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And take care of those things.
Very good job on, on both of those today.
Yeah, totally, great job.
Thank you.
Should I just have somebody sign them tonight and that way I can post them?
Either one of, any one of us three can sign it, since the clerk's not here. Any board member, is that correct? Any board member can sign it.
I think so. I think we, we agreed to that a few months ago.
Yeah, and the same thing with, as far as, you know, any time sheet or whatever, we can all, okay.
Yep, all right.
Just signed it.
I think that's fair. All right, so next on the agenda, Mr. Ali, you want to come forward? Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. I'm good. All right, so we received, I don't know if it was-
Modification.
Yes, earlier this week, I think it was, I know the date on it is, is, wasn't, wasn't updated, but we stamped it as September 13th as having been-
The letter was September 13th.
A week ago.
Yeah.
Yep. And this is for a, an independent request for, for modification where you're specifically requesting that the board find an insubstantial change.
Yeah.
And my understanding of just the, the difference between the two, I mean, I'll just summarize here and then you can, if you have any comments, I'll, I'll let you speak, whatever you'd like to say. My understanding is, is that essentially the under, the, this request deals with the nine one bedrooms with dens. And it says that two of those nine ultimately will be affordable once the leases have an opportunity to, to, to renew. And assuming that the current tenants no longer want to stay there, then, then you can convert those into, into affordables.
Yes.
And in addition, of the remaining five one bedrooms with no dens, what is it?
Three of them.
Three of those will be affordable. Which will mean that, that the-
Total, total number of units will be 21 affordable instead of 20.
21 affordable units rather than the, what, the previous 20.
Yes.
Any, any comments, is it that-
That's all I was looking for.
Okay.
Day one.
Perfect. Perfect.
So-
Go ahead.
This still has to go to MHP. They still have to approve this, right?
As far as the affordable things, I, that's, I believe that's correct.
Because any affordables, more affordables they like it.
Right.
And 21, I had passed it through David Rockwell, he didn't have any problem.
Okay.
Before, we made, we agreed for this modification, it was verified by David Rockwell from MHP that, is it okay?
Okay.
So they approved, basically he told he should be okay with it.
All right, so what I would, what I would request from the chair is to either contact town council or send something directly to MHP, to David Rockwell, requesting something in writing to show that MHP has no issues and that the 21 affordable units, that way we have documentation so that there's nothing going to come back and say, oh, no, you know, we didn't, you know, I want documentation to show that MHP is on board and that they agree with this.
Okay.
And I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
I have another question, David. This has to be approved by MHP.
Yeah.
For the final approval is not done yet.
Right.
So this is what we're waiting, once if they have this one, they'll give us the final approval and the financing.
Yeah, right, but I want, I want something from them saying that because there was an issue with this specific item, I want something from them to show that they're on board with that. That, that comes now and then when they send the final one, then that's a whole different. But I want something to show that they're on board with this right now. And that, that's right.
So we get independent confirmation to send them that they're acknowledging not 20 but 21 affordable units.
Exactly, exactly. And that, that, what we, the arrangement that we have is, you know, we split it up at, you know, the three this and two for that and seven and two. I want them to send, send us something in writing so that we have it for our paperwork.
I think they wouldn't do it. Because I had to some, ZBIA had to get, send the paperwork.
Yeah.
Saying this is what we are approving.
Yeah.
And if they have a problem, they'll come back to us. Usually they don't give opinions before that. Again, David must be right, but usually it doesn't happen. This is our, this is the suggestion from the ZBIA and the developer, going to them. This is how the ZBIA wants it.
Yeah.
And then they approve it or disapprove it, it's up to them.
Okay, right.
Well, anyways, I still like-
Yeah, so I'll reach out to town council and into Mr.-
Because town council has, my town, my council and town council has, MHP informed everything was going on and with the approval from, verbal approval from MHP, they wouldn't have a problem, that's why I got into this agreement, otherwise I didn't have any interest of giving 21 units instead of 20.
Okay. And, and as you, I think, mentioned earlier, in your experience, MHP, they shouldn't have any issue with going from 20 to 21.
21. Because they, they, basically what they're doing is they are financing it and they are monit, monitoring the whole system. And on the whole situation is, if they don't finance this project, I had to go to somebody else to finance it.
Mm-hmm.
So, they know that one also, at the same time, I had to find a new monitoring agent. That would be, I had to go back to mass housing. So, since they have spent so much time on it and everything, I would like to close the loan with them.
Sure, sure. And before, they were aware of the 20 and-
Yeah, they didn't have a problem.
They were fine with that, so we didn't think-
Actually, they had given the regulatory agreement also, everything was there.
Okay. Are there other comments?
Yes.
I do.
Go ahead, Raj.
It's your email, this was on August 17th.
Okay.
So, the email reads, hello, ZBIA, I wanted to provide a quick update, as discussed yesterday, Carolyn reached out to attorney Haverty today with our proposal.
Yeah.
Our past proposal with one bedroom and a den with four of nine affordable units was rejected.
Yeah.
But Mr. Ali countered with three affordable units.
Yes.
So, what do I see here?
August 18th. So, so let me, let me clarify that. And I, I think, I'm sure you're, you're aware of this as well. About a month ago, a little less than a month ago, or maybe actually a little bit more, around August 18th or so, we had an executive session and then after that executive session, we had, the board had, had sort of reached an understanding in, because we were trying to avoid, or trying to see what we could do to help, to help facilitate things rather than going to, you know, appeals or mediation.
Yeah.
I know you're, I know you're aware of that. Because both of our councils have, have been talking to each other. And out of that meeting, this board had, had come to an agreement that I memorialized in an email to the board and to, and to town council so that everyone was aware of that. Our town council reached out to your attorney, the original request that, that we were looking for was rejected, but there was a counter offer down to three of the nine
Yeah.
One bedroom with dens being affordables, right? And then a couple of, now, this is, gets to your question. Then, I don't know what it was, two or three weeks later, when I think, when the two attorneys were actually trying to write down what, what the change was going to be, I believe it was attorney Haverty, and Carolyn, I'm not sure where the misunderstanding took place, but there was a misunderstanding that the three affordables of the nine one bedroom one dens was going, was meant on our side to be in addition to the, the previous number of affordable, so going from 20 to 23. That was a misunderstanding, I'm not sure, I don't know whose fault it was, I don't think it's, I don't think it's relevant whose fault it was. But our understanding coming out of that meeting was, well, we were going from 20 to 23 affordables. They interpreted the initial offer of three as, as meaning switching from four one bedroom affordables down to one.
Yes.
One bedroom affordable and just making the three one bedroom. So they interpreted that as meaning no additional affordable units, okay? That's where the initial agreement was and then the misconception came to light. So we were still at, we were on the 23 affordable side, they were on the 20 affordable side. Where we ended up was 21 in the middle, which was still within the scope of what, you know, what, where the discussion ended up. So, so that's, I, I agree with you, Raj, that, that's-
That was a hundred percent.
Something changed, you're right, that, that's the-
Yeah, but I don't-
That's the, the difference.
So, during the executive meeting, but the first one, the second one, or whatever the ones.
Yeah.
This, whatever we-
So remember this one, I, I don't want to say this again because this was confidential, but remember this one.
Yes.
And, and where we've ended up.
I think as a whole it was a fair, hey.
It's fair for you, but I'm talking for the town.
I'm talking for the town.
Yes, I'm talking about the town. It's fair for you, it's fair for your business, but I'm talking about the town.
We're not talking about the town.
Yes, no, it's not fair for the town, definitely not for the, for the town. That's what I would say.
But at, at least, that's the, the backstory.
Okay, so when it goes to the, the other question I have is, so now we have nine one bedrooms, if I understand correctly, two with a den.
Yes.
So in that, two will be affordable.
Right.
Seven will be market rate.
Right, yes.
So have you rented all nine units now? Okay.
That's why in the-
He's a hundred percent. So, okay, so you also mentioned that, is it one is, when is the-
Lease going to be-
Lease is going to be ending.
One, one of the den is getting vacated next month, that will be affordable.
Next month.
Unit number 215. PBD is pretty good, PBD properties, I, we give them something, they keep on top of it and they change it. And we are, what we are trying to do is move one of the one bedroom affordable, we have four one bedroom affordable, one of the one bedroom affordable guy from one bedroom to move him to one bedroom den. And then, as soon as the next unit gets vacated, we are going to order-
I totally lost. My question is, we have two one bedroom with den.
Yes.
I'm sorry, two one bedroom with a den. So you said the unit number 215, from your wording, the lease will expire next month.
Yeah.
Did, the person is going to renew their lease?
No, he's not.
Is not renewing it or you have, you have told them, oh, this is going to be designated as an affordable?
No, 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 he was, he was leaving.
So, but if he stays back, what happens? If he wants to renew it, what happens?
We had to wait for the next guy to, we have nine of them in which two of them has to go, we had to move it. Or we, we don't have to renew their leases.
You don't have to renew the leases, but on, but what if, if you are continue to, some people, you know, when they rent the apartment, they continue to live there for a long, longer, longer time.
Yeah.
So in that situation, so we will never see this two bedroom, the one bedroom with a den ever coming to affordable units. Since, the reason I'm saying is, you know, there are nine one bedrooms with a den and you have rented all of them, and how do we going to keep track of that? Which one is, is there, is there ever the lease will end, is that, when the lease ends, will that become an affordable? Who is going to monitor it?
So I think, once he goes before MHP and they sign off on 21, that, that, that has to happen.
Monitoring agent is the one who's going to, I have a very good, that is a very valid question. We have a monitoring agent that is MHP. The document says clearly that as soon as the unit gets vacated, it has to be affordable. They are the monitoring agent and they are going to be on top of it, that's their job. And PBD properties is a property management people, which they have the document, they are working on it already.
Okay, what about the one bedrooms with no den? When will the next affordable be vacated so that it becomes a market rate?
Now, before then, how many are-
Want to stay with this here?
No, no, before then, to follow your questions. Before then, how many of those five one bedrooms with no den are rented?
Hundred percent, we are hundred percent rented.
How many are affordable, how many are marketable?
Four affordable and one market.
So now currently four affordables?
Right. And one of them-
Goes to your question.
Right, and then one, so when the next, when one of those four affordables becomes vacant, that apartment will then become market.
Marketed.
Okay, now going back to Raj, Raj was asking, okay, so we know that C215 is going to be vacated, that is going to become an affordable unit. Okay, now out of the other eight one bedrooms with a den, do you know, off the top of your head, do you know which one is the next one that's going to be coming up for the lease?
What happened when we were leasing up this project, I said from the beginning, we started leasing up from December. December, most of the units got rented in December.
Right.
So usually in December we get renewals.
Okay, so sometime, so sometime in December this year.
By February, by February.
Okay, so February, okay, so I've got a list of the nine one bedrooms with a den, okay? 215, C215 is now going to become an affordable, so that leaves eight of them left, okay? And one, two, three, four, five of them are on the second floor, two are on the third floor and one is on the first floor, okay? Now, so from now on, starting next month, C215 will always be an affordable unit?
Yes.
Okay, so then out of the other eight, whatever the next one is, you said come February, that unit, whatever unit it is.
It will be affordable.
That will be affordable, okay. When that happens, I'd like for you to send something to the board to let us know which unit it is, so that we have a record. We know that it's, it's going to be C215, it's going to be one of them, I want to know which one, is it going to be 101, 202, 211, 212, 214, 216, 301 or 315? I want to know which one of those other ones is going to become an affordable, is going to become an affordable unit.
I will do that.
You'll, you'll commit to that.
Okay. Then the other-
If I don't keep my 21 units affordable, I'm violating my permit. My permit says I had to have 21 affordable units.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, there is a loophole too. The loophole is, somebody has to vacate that.
Right, right.
So somebody can keep renewing it.
No.
Another 10 years.
Raj, I can understand your thing, but eight people, in eight people, one, one-
This is just a, this is the first year, you know, on a realistically, that could happen next year or that could happen in 10 years.
Also too, I'd like an updated one of these, okay? This is that affordable rental housing opportunity and down here where it says affordable program guidelines, rents and income limits, okay? I want, you have the one bedroom, which is four that are affordable, that's going to change to three. Then I want another column in there between that one bedroom-
That's the marketing brochure, right?
Okay, yeah. I want the one bedroom with den.
I cannot change that thing till I have this thing signed and my, then I can do it.
Okay, because-
I'll bring it to you.
Okay, because right now, I'm looking at a one bedroom with no den, an affordable, is 1275 minus the 111, so it's 1164. A two bedroom, which is 14 of them, is 1530 and with the allowance, utility allowance is 1388. So we're looking at about $224. So I want to know what, what the difference in price is going to be between a one bedroom with no den and a one bedroom with a den and then I want to, and then it'll show that the two bedroom has, is going. So I'm thinking that it's going to be somewhere in the middle of this. So if it's, if it's $224, I'm thinking about 112, so one bedroom with a den is probably going to be about 12 something. That's what I'm looking at, I don't know.
That's how they calculated anyhow, because your calculation is right about it, but that's PBD properties are qualified people, they are approved by mass housing partnership and there is another agency which they use, Spectrum.
Okay.
Both the agencies had to approve that number.
Okay, so, but what I'm saying is, is that once they, once this is approved, then they have to update this.
Update that.
Okay, well, and I want to make sure, Mr. Chair, through you, I want to make sure that when this is, when this is updated, you know, I want to make sure that we get a copy of this, okay? That it'll show a one bedroom, a one bedroom with a den, two bedroom, three bedroom, so that we know, you know, what the difference is.
It's the marketing notice you're saying.
Right, the marketing notice.
You want the breakdown.
Yeah, I want the breakdown of it.
In there.
That's what it's called, marketing notice?
Yeah.
For affordable units.
Yeah, for affordable, affordable rental housing opportunity. It's the affordable program guidelines, rents, income limits.
That's the same brochure goes to DSCD also, on their website.
Because I'm sure that MHP is going to look for it too.
No, they will put it on the, their website also.
All right.
They had to update their website after it changed.
Okay, all right. The other thing that I have is, is that, okay, I was looking at, Mr. Chair, of the comprehensive permit, okay? So, this is going to be incorporated into the original, right?
That's what it says here.
Right? Because this is the one that was-
Yeah, so this is, this is going to be an amended-
To this here, okay, all right.
Because you'll see that the, the amended part is much shorter than that, it doesn't have all the, the level of detail, it's almost-
No, 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 but I want to make sure that it's part of this.
Yep.
Okay, to show that, you know, that the changes were made, that, you know, that is now, okay, I think it's, a second, so it's now-
After this is approved, I had to record this at registry of DSCD anyhow.
Okay, so now, what it's going to be is, as far as affordable units, we're going to have three one bedrooms with no den, two one bedroom with den, 14 two bedrooms and two three bedrooms, which makes 21. Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that that's, you know, that there's some kind of, you know, guidelines in here.
So-
So 14, 30, okay, so there'll still be 38 units in that building, okay? Okay.
No, that's the extra copies, if you want.
All right.
So can I ask another questions?
Of course.
I do know that in the, during the application time, you know, there was something talked about adding the building A to include a yoga room, a fitness center, a leasing center, a gazebo and a dart path to the project.
Yeah, I remember those were-
It was there, but it was never been discussed, never been taken any vote on that.
So that was part of the original modification request, I believe, can, can you confirm that?
Yes.
Right?
It was part of it.
So I agree, I don't know how much we actually discussed it.
We did not talk, not even a one word.
But I think that was because the, the-
We were concerned.
Discussion took a different direction.
Yes.
We didn't go into detail that time because the board was going through-
So he's happy to, I mean, it's, it's up for debate now if you have any comments or, or concerns or questions.
Okay, so your office, the yoga room, the exercise room, community room and, what's his name there?
Jim.
The, and the gym and property management company is all in building A, correct?
Building A and building C.
What's in building C?
Building C is my office.
On the floor. Yeah, with the caretaker residence and offices?
Yeah.
What is, what is the caretaker residence, what the hell is that?
If I have to put in-house caretaker resident, he can stay there and maintain the whole thing. What happens is down the road, after 10 years.
It's not stated in the-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, so that's going to become an apartment?
No, not an apartment.
Is that person going to live there?
If he has to stay overnight, he has to stay overnight.
Yeah.
But it's in building C.
So what is, what is that going to include, is that going to be like, is that going to be an apartment?
Right here.
No, it can be an apartment.
It's in the plan.
It's a caretaker who is there on night call, they stay there.
It's not in here.
Has that-
It's not in the camera room, in the, among the-
Has that apartment, that caretaker's residence?
Mm-hmm.
Has that always been there?
No.
Or is that a change?
It's not in the original plan, Raj is right about that. But this was submitted to the HAC, when we got this plan, we submitted to HAC with the plan with the town and this one.
I'm really baffled now.
You've been there several times.
No, but I've never, I've never seen anything that had anything to do with the caretaker residence.
And also it was not, there is no-
You can take the residence out, I don't have a problem. If they're, you can leave it as an office.
So is, is he the one who would be maintaining the building, talking to tenants about-
Always.
Potential problems or issues they're having?
We get calls there all the way till midnight.
Is there one of those in every building?
No.
A, B and C or just?
Yeah, building C is the biggest building.
Yeah.
And building A, we have the leasing office.
Yeah.
Right now, since it is new, we don't get much calls, we just get calls up till 8, 8:30.
Yeah.
Otherwise, after everything, if things get old, five, six years, there will be a lot of- there will a lot of plumbing calls, electrical calls. Nowadays, we are getting calls at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, people getting locked because they want their dog. And somebody has to go open it all the time. I've been doing it.
So, what are the hours, just, I'm just curious now, what are the hours of the property management company?
Property, leasing office closes at four-thirty, nine to four-thirty.
But aren't they, aren't they the ones that are controlling the property? So are they the ones that have to send somebody?
They lease it, they manage it, anything with maintenance, we do it. They just lease...
I don't know, I don't know about Raj, but I don't ever remember any of that information ever being put out.
No. It was not there, and also, I, I did read this...
So now I'm totally confused.
I did read the, among the ones, you know, like, ten, fifteen times, and it's not there.
So one of...
I didn't see it in this, in this thing.
One of the things that, that is within our purview tonight is to make changes to this amended, proposed, um, comprehensive permit. So we could consider adding, you know, after, where it talks about Building A with the yoga room and, and all the rest, we could consider adding language that says, "and a caretaker office."
Okay, can, can we, can I ask Mr. Ali to come up? Can you just come up here for a second? Okay, just so that everybody knows, I'm showing Mr. Ali a, um, the plan for Building C, the ground floor plan, okay? And what I'm showing him is the caretaker, okay? All right, so this is a partition, this is your office, correct?
Yeah, and this is the entrance we're going through.
Okay, and then...
It's all open, this is the hallway.
Okay, but there's like a kitchen here?
There's a small kitchen, kitchen area.
Okay, where, where is this caretaker gonna sleep?
He cannot sleep there, but if he has to stay there, there's a shower in the bathroom, that's all. If you want to take this thing off, I don't have a problem.
No, no, it's, it's not that, it's just, it's just that it was not on the original plan, and nothing was ever discussed about this. And, and that, this is what the whole thing is so confusing to me, is that we keep adding things on that were never approved or discussed when this plan was originally talked about.
That's not leasing, this is not an apartment which I can rent it by rights.
No, but it is, but it is, but it is a, but it is a place where if somebody needs to be there seven-twenty-four, they're gonna be able to stay.
Yeah.
So you said the building inspector approved that?
I, I, that's what I'm saying, I don't... Am I looking at this wrong, Mr. Chair? I mean, to me, that sounds like if it's gonna, if somebody, if there's gonna be a caretaker that potentially at one time is gonna have to stay there seven-twenty-four, you know?
Yeah.
Then there has to be some kind of, um, living accommodations. Obviously, there has to be a bathroom, you know, with a shower and stuff. There probably has to be a little bit of a, some kind of kitchen or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, and there has to be some kind of a bunk. I don't care if it's something that he's gonna hang from the ceiling, you know, a cot or something, you know, a hammock, you know, like we did in the Navy years ago. But, this is, you know, Mr. Ali, I, I really don't have any problems with you personally. What I have a problem with is that it seems like we keep adding things on that nobody knew anything about. I wish that, you know, all of this could have been done at the very beginning. The one, the nine one-bedrooms with, you know, with, with a den. If, when you finished Building C with all the changes, if you'd have came to the board and said, "Okay, look, ZBA, this is what I've done, okay? We're not putting in an elevator, we needed to rearrange these things. So what I wanna do is, I wanna take nine of those." But no, you waited until after all, this whole project was just about done, and all the units were rented, and now all of a sudden... This is what the most frustrating part about this whole thing is. You know, I understand forty-B, 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 you try, we try to work with the developer, but it's just, it's just so darn frustrating and all, you know? And the most, the most frustrating thing is, is, and it has nothing, not, don't take this in personally, but this has been going on since two thousand and four. It's almost two thousand and nineteen, almost fifteen years, and we're still having issues. This should have been done, you know, a year ago, in my opinion. We should have had all of this all taken care of. Everybody should have been going on their merry ways. You should have been going on and doing another project, we would have been able to do. But we're still dealing with ninety-two North Main Street, and it's just totally frustrating. I, I, I'm sorry to vent, but, you know, it, it just, it's just, you know, the way I feel about this whole thing, you know? I, I mean, I, I don't know what you wanna do about this, I really don't. I mean, you know, he says, "We'll take it out." Okay, well, how do you take it out, you know? I, I don't know.
So what's that?
Because see, this, this is the plan, okay? That was in May of two thousand and eighteen, okay? This is what it shows on Level B. An office and maintenance room, okay? With a lobby and stairs, okay? Well, if you look at this, look, look, look how much different it is. The stairs are way over here, okay? The lobby is three times bigger than what it was opposed to, than what it was on this one, you know? I, I just, I, I don't get it, I really don't, you know? I mean, as much as I wanna just, you know, resolve these issues and get it over with, it just seems like it's coming back in more and more and more to haunt us.
It's not the end.
You know?
It's not going to be the end.
You know, it's, you know, there's gotta be a point where it's gonna come to an end, I, I don't understand it, you know? And, and here's another thing. C one oh one, okay, on this plan, shows that it's a two-bedroom. But on the list that I have, it's actually a one-bedroom with a den. So, when did that change? You know, between May of this year and whatever the date is on this one, June? So in less than, in a little over a month, it went from a two-bedroom to a one-bedroom with a den?
Yes.
So did you, did you rent that as a two-bedroom?
When we rent an apartment, we rented it as a one-bedroom den because that was mistakenly marked because that apartment has a, a clear door. When you have a den, you don't have a privacy door, you have a glass door.
I, I don't know, am I looking at this totally, I mean, you know, I'm not trying to cause any problems or anything, I'm just trying to get down to the bottom and look at this whole thing, I just...
I, I hear you, it's frustrating because you're right. It seems like some of these issues keep, you know, reemerging, the, the same thing over and over again. That said, I know currently what we're talking about here is there's a request for a modification, okay? And we have to decide whether there is a legally defensible basis for not granting the modification.
Well, I, I think that the one, the most important thing to me was, I did not wanna see these nine apartments become two-bedrooms.
Yes.
Okay? I, that, that was one thing, okay? We resolved that issue, okay? Fortunately, the developer and his attorney agreed that they could stay as one-bedroom with a den, okay? That's fine, I don't have a problem with that, okay? The other thing was, is that Raj and myself, and you, and Mr. Whitkis, and Nate all had issues about only one, one-bedroom without a den being marked.
Right.
And the four would be, you know, affordable, okay? And, and you know, I'm all for the affordables, you know, we need to try to get that. And so now we made a concession, okay? We're keeping the nine one-bedrooms with a den, okay? We're gonna let seven of them be market and two be unaffordable, okay? Great. Now, Mr. Ali, what he asked for is to take one of those affordable one-bedroom with no den and make it a market.
Yes.
Which I know was an issue for, for, for most of us because there was only gonna be one, one-bedroom that was gonna be a market, okay? So I, so we added a, we added one more affordable unit, okay?
Yes.
So, you know, and I know that originally, we wanted to see six one-bedrooms with a den market and three affordable. And the other three, and the other, the one-bedrooms without a den would have stayed the same, one and four, okay? Which would have increased it by three, okay? Three more affordables, okay? All right, so, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just so perplexed. You know, I'm looking at this and I'm like, where the heck is, where the heck does this caretaker residence and office come up? I thought this was gonna be Mr. Ali's office, but now he's got a caretaker office, you know? I mean, if you, if you're gonna put, you know, if worse comes to worse, and, and maybe I shouldn't even say this, make it a studio apartment, you know, and make it, say, okay, it's gonna be a studio apartment, and it's gonna be for residential...
There is no kitchen, there is no nothing, so how can you make a studio apartment?
There is a small kitchen, you're right.
It has a small kitchen and it has a bathroom. So all he has to do is...
Yeah, wait for a month, it will be a one-bedroom apartment.
You can inspect it anytime.
Yeah, wait for a month, it will be a one-bedroom apartment.
Well, let me, Mr. Chair, let me ask you this question, okay? So, this is the list of the one-bedrooms with a den, okay? And this is a list that was created of all the apartments, you know, through the whole development, okay? And I understand, I believe Town Council has made this adamantly clear that because the apartments are rented, you know, that we're not able to, you know? It, it's just that I have some concerns about things that, on one plan we got in five-five, one of the units that now is a one-bedroom with a den was actually on here as a two-bedroom. So I'm not sure, you know, how that applies. I have some other things. The other thing too is, out of those nine one-bedrooms with a den, are any of them, are any of them hand, for handicap people? Handicap accessible?
It is accessible, but not hundred percent handicap. We are told, I, I'm supposed to give total of five accessible units.
Okay.
I think we, we have it in the project, by rights.
All the accessible units are on the first floor.
Or, or the basement.
For the basement.
Because we don't have elevators, so we can't, we have the second or fourth floor.
They have them on the second floor, bedroom accessible.
Yes, it is, it is the first, first floor basically, it's not the, the ground floor, because...
So you have one in the basement?
Yeah, one on the second floor.
And then two on the second floor?
Yeah. Basement, they call it as first floor.
Which is totally weird to me, but that's, that's beside the... Hold on a second, let me do, I just wanna verify some things here. Okay, all right, so here, here's another thing too. You, you know, it's not, I guess it's not considered a substantial change, but I'm looking at the plan here, okay? This plan is dated, in my eyesight tells me, six twenty-eight, two eighteen, okay? And it shows, you know, the units on the, on Level Two.
Yeah.
But if you look at this one here, which is dated five-five, two eighteen, it shows the staircase is right there. Where on the other one, it shows that the staircase is over here. Oh wait, no, the staircase, that's the staircase, okay? So it's in the right place, okay?
The whole confusion started because we moved the staircase and took the elevator out.
When, when you lost the, the top floor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and here, here's...
There's a lot of plans which were hanging around when we were negotiating with the Town Council.
Here's the other thing, okay? Where on the second floor, on Level Two, where did the custodial room go to? Because on this one here, it shows that it's right, right above where C two oh two is, apartment C.
It's like the column of the sprinkler room.
Okay, which is, this, on this plan, it shows it as a two-bedroom. Over here, it shows it as a one-bedroom with a den, and that's what I have on the list, as a one-bedroom with a den. Level two.
Level two of Building C.
Oh wait, was that Level Four, is that the first floor, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. Second floor, hold on, hold on, let me go back and look. I don't even, I don't even know. Okay, this is Level Two, that's Level, that's the second, the second floor considered Level Two?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
No, actually, ground floor, basement floor is Level One. First floor is Level Two.
Okay.
And we have, second is third floor. Because of the walkout basement.
Okay, this is Level Two. Okay, see, so, okay, so Level Two, right? This is Level Two.
Which is the first floor.
Okay, it shows that this room, two oh one, is a two-bedroom on this plan.
Okay.
On this plan, it shows it's a one-bedroom with a den, okay?
Uh, what if we...
And then on this one here, which is right next to it, okay? That one's okay. This one here, which is the third one in, one, two, three. I don't see two bedrooms on that one, and yet it says two bedrooms there. See, this, this is what I'm saying, it's, this here is, you know, and, and I have to agree with Raj one hundred percent, is that we... Well, I guess I'm gonna put the blame on myself as, as, when the chair, as being the chair when all this was done. I was not paying much, a close attention to this as I should have been, as far as...
No, we just got this one.
No, as far as the changes that were going on as construction was moving along.
Yeah, the issue was, you know, the building inspector.
And that, and I take responsibility for that.
The building inspector was the one.
Because these things, you know, certain things got moved, you know, moved around, these one-bed, like I, like I'll say again, you know? It was never, never discussed that any, any of the one-bedrooms would be one-bedrooms with a den. They were all gonna be one-bedroom units, okay? So, because like I said, if it would have been, then this comprehensive permit, when it was written, okay? It would have said, you know, specifically, like the revised one says, you know? This one would have, we would have had, down here. Whatever the heck it is.
Yeah, it's a long document.
Can I, can I tell about the changes when this was discussed with the building inspector and the architect? And architect gave an article about one-bedroom dens, definition of a bedroom, gave to the building inspector, building inspector agreed, and he issued a letter saying that he agrees with the article.
How long?
Again, hold on, one second, can I please? Again.
I was not...
Hold on, only one minute. You are not the, this is not your first project. You do know very well, you are a well-seasoned developer, right? So you do know very well...
You tell it all the time.
No, no, no.
Doesn't look like I am.
What, what has to be done, when has to be done, and what need to be brought to the board, you know this very well. So don't put the blame on the building inspector.
I'm not putting blame on the building...
The building inspector is wrong, we all know that.
No, no, no.
At this time, we all know that because building inspector was going by your documents, whatever's sitting on your office, he never looked at our, the original submitted plans. So that's where the problem went on. And then the building inspector is wrong, and anyway, it's all done.
Okay. On the comprehensive permit that we approved, it says on page, on page nine, it says Building C, thirty-eight units comprised of fourteen one-bedroom units and twenty-four two-bedroom units, okay? To me, that means there's fourteen one-bedroom units, okay? Now with the revised one, we have five one-bedroom units and nine one-bedroom with a den. That was never, never discussed about having any one-bedrooms with a den. It wasn't discussed, it wasn't mentioned until, like I said before, till, hold on, Mr. Ali, until after this project was completed. If there was gonna be a change and there was gonna, then this should have came to us when Building C was done, and they were getting ready to construct Building B, then the developer should have came to the board and said, "Okay, look, I gotta change, you know, because I had to move this around, new elevator and all this, okay, I'm gonna take nine of those one-bedrooms and make, put a den in them, with maybe the possibility of putting a two-bedroom." That would have been a discussion for the board at that time, not waiting till the project was completed and then all of a sudden throw a curveball at us, okay? This is not Yankee Stadium, and I'm not David Price, I'm sorry, you know? I mean, I got the worst pitching record in, in Yankee Stadium. This is Wes Poilston, and this is a forty-B project.
Yeah, but at the ending, you lose.
I know, at the ending, I lose, you know, so, I mean, but...
The other one last.
So, this is, this is the whole...
What do you want to do now? You know, it's all done.
I don't know.
You have a point.
Yeah, what do you want to do? You lost.
The building's there.
David Fimia lost, you know? No ball there.
Okay, so, I don't know.
I think, you know, there is no honesty in this.
Like I said, I'm still, I'm still a little confused with all of this, you know? And I guess we need to make a decision on what we're gonna do tonight, okay? And... And whatever, if we, whatever decision we make is gonna depend on what's gonna happen. If it's a decision in favor of the developer-
Yep.
Then that ends the whole process.
Yep.
Okay? If it's a decision where it's not in favor of the developer-
Yeah.
Then I guess we either go into mediation, or we're going to hack.
Right.
One of those two decisions, okay?
Yeah.
And that's something that we're gonna try to-
Right, it's a decision that, you're right, and we have to talk a little bit about, I think, the consequences of our decisions. So let me ask you this though, before we get to that.
Okay.
So we just talked about, and I think you're acknowledging, that on this, the plan that was most recently sent to us dated, what is it, June 28th, I think?
Yeah.
That on the ground floor, there's this caretaker residence and office that wasn't previously directed.
Right, it was there, but it was not labeled.
Yeah.
It was labeled as office.
Yeah.
And what I was telling-
Office and maintenance.
Yeah, what I was telling is, when we had discussion with my attorney-
Yeah.
He told me, you have a kitchen and a bathroom, are you planning to rent it? I told him, I'm not planning to rent it, I cannot rent it.
Yeah.
With, if I violate that, if I have eighty-one units there, I'm violating my permit, my permit can be pulled out.
Yeah.
So he told, what is your plan to do it? I told, down the road, after ten years, if something happens there, if you had to have an onsite manager-
Yeah.
To stay there, that would be a good thing.
Yeah.
So that was suggested, and it was put on the paper, and sent it to Carolyn, and they had all discussed. There were a lot of other more discussion went on, of changing everything, updating everything, all the other stuff.
Okay.
Because of the mediation going on with the other people.
Yeah.
It was a lot of stuff, it's not just, we can talk about, this happened this way, this, the plans are, I have plans from 2004 on this project.
Yeah.
I know it's tiring for the board, and it's tiring for me also, I want to close this thing, call it a day, if the town doesn't want to, I cannot help it. Either town is in a position, they negotiated, got one more extra unit.
Mm-hmm.
If you people agree to it, I would appreciate it, we'll close it, finish the thing, I'll see you in the planning board meeting.
Let me ask you this, just one more follow-up.
Yeah, go ahead.
With these latest plans, and again, this is June 28th that we just received last week, so we just talked about the caretaker issue, are there any other issues on these plans that you're aware of, that differentiate from the, now, because Dave did mention that there's a two-bedroom that looks like it's changed, right next to the, the office?
Yeah.
On the-
We have changed it to den, it was changed to den.
This is true.
What we did was, we took the door out and put a glass door-
But the thing was, is that when C102 is now a one-bedroom with a den, was it rented as, because on this plan, it shows it's a two-bedroom.
Yeah.
Was it rented as a two-bedroom? You know, I mean, that's, that's gonna make a difference.
Mm-hmm.
At least as far as I can see, I mean, you know, if I'm renting a two-bedroom, then I'm expecting a two-bedroom, but if he's turning around saying, well, it's a one-bedroom with a den, then that can't be a bedroom.
Well, on the new plan, is, doesn't that still say a two-bedroom?
One-bedroom den.
Let's see, C102.
Yeah, so now he's talking about C102, so now we're two away from the office. Is that a two-bedroom?
No. Because here's-
You're talking 101. You're talking 101 or 101?
Now he's talking about. One, one, one.
101 he's talking about.
Yeah, 101 is the end.
Yeah, but see, but on 101, it shows that it's a two-bed, okay? But on this plan, it shows it's a one-bedroom with a den.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
That den is awful big. I'm sorry, that's a huge den. But anyways, that's beside the point.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, my question is about the caretaker thing, okay? Now, if for some reason, a year from now, he needs to have somebody that needs to be on station, 7/24-
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Does he have to come back and tell us? Because now, isn't that gonna be something that the building inspector-
No, that's just, you know-
Hold on, is that something that the building inspector and the Board of Health are gonna have to look at to see? Because isn't there, you know, I mean-
Say, say, suppose if somebody is living there, he could, you know, I have seen in apartment places, people live, but they live in an apartment.
Right, exactly.
So this guy will live in, he'll live in with their family, so then that counts, counted as an apartment.
Yeah, but it's-
It's not counted as an office.
Yeah, but it's not in the apartment, but it's-
So, I would say, no, just leave that thing as an office.
I would not argue that. If I had to change it later on, if there is a necessity, I'll come back to the board.
Yeah.
Okay?
So what if we propose to amend the update, the amended comprehensive permit, to note that on that ground floor, where it says-
Unit 100.
-caret residence and office.
Yeah.
That it's going to be used exclusively as an office.
Office space.
That's fine.
Are you, are you open to that?
I'm okay with that. I want to close it.
To be used-
If I, if there is a need for it, I'll come back.
Okay, only as an office, I'm just gonna-
And maintenance room.
And maintenance room. Maintenance room.
It's not a maintenance room, it's caretaker. Caretaker room.
Yeah, and, okay, and, okay, I'll put, and caretaker room.
Yeah.
But not a residence.
Okay.
Okay? Just to make it clear, we're all on the same page on that one.
Yes.
So that will not be a residence. And, and to your point, it will say in the comprehensive permit, you've got eighty units there, not eighty-one.
Yeah.
Um, and so, that overall count doesn't change, it's, it's gonna remain at eighty on the record. And we'll make it clear that that unit is not gonna be a residential unit.
How you can tell that is not for rent? It's not a rental unit.
Oh, yeah.
Or a resident.
Okay. Not a rental unit.
Yeah. In other words, the guy, maintenance guy's gonna live there for free.
That's why we could just say, make it clear that it's, it's not a residence, it's not for, it's not for residential use. Are there any other changes that you're aware of from the May plan to this June 28th plan that, that you can think of?
I don't have any changes. What all it is, it is here now.
Yeah.
And I want to see if you guys can vote on it, subject to, on the vote is, the unit 100 has to be a caretaker room and an office, not a residence. No problem.
Okay.
Okay, so on the, on the second floor, the 301 is now a one-bedroom with a den, and on this one, it was a two-bedroom, okay? So that changed. And where the heck is 315? And 315, which is now a one-bedroom with a den-
Yeah.
Was originally a two-bedroom.
And that's what, that's part of what, those are two of the nine one-bedroom den units now.
Right, right, but originally, they were two bedrooms.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm just counting up, I just wanna make sure that I have the right number, okay?
Absolutely.
Is this a Word document? This is a Word document, right?
Um, I don't know.
Yeah, it is a Word document.
Because I couldn't, uh, made sense of the word, it's not PDF.
No, usually they send you Word document. They must send you Word document.
Well, not if they scanned it.
No, this was Word, what I got. Maybe you have a PDF document, I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, somebody's gonna have to go back and look at my math, because, Okay, so now, what I'm showing in Building C, counting up this latest addition, I have fifteen one-bedrooms with no den, twelve two-bedrooms, and nine one-bedroom with a den. And according to the comprehensive permit, there's supposed to be twenty-four two-bedroom units, and only five one-bedrooms and nine one-bedroom with a den. So if somebody can go back and verify my calculations, that would be great, because even on the original, which is on page nine, there's supposed to be twenty, supposed to be twenty-four two-bedroom units in Building, in Building C, and I'm only counting twelve.
Two bedrooms?
Yeah.
Maybe you missed a floor.
No, I did all three floors.
I think I missed a floor.
Let's see, there's five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty, give me, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-four plus nine plus five.
It's thirty-eight. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-six.
Yeah, so let's, let's, let's go through this.
Okay, alright, so I'm on the ground floor.
I think you can help us with this.
Okay, I'm on the ground floor.
Ground floor should have six units.
Start with the ground floor, Building C.
One, two, three, four, five, six units on the first floor.
Six, okay, I see one den, and-
Let's count the units first.
Okay.
Okay, six units on the first floor.
Six units on the, on the, or the ground floor is, is what our plan says.
Okay, and on first floor, I got sixteen.
Sixteen and sixteen.
And sixteen, okay, alright, so now, this is what I have for the break.
So we have a total of-
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Okay, so on the ground floor, on the ground floor, this is what I have.
We have total of thirty-eight, not thirty-six.
I have one, one-bedroom with a den.
David, you one minute, please. It's not thirty-six, it's thirty-eight. Total of thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay, let me see.
Sixteen, plus sixteen is thirty-two, plus six is thirty-eight. Thirty-eight total units in the building.
There are nine one-bedroom dens.
I missed two, I missed two of them, but anyway, okay, so, let's see, on the, on the ground floor, I have, one, two, three-
Two one-bedrooms.
I have three, one, one, I mean, I have, let's see, one bedroom with a den.
Yes, one.
Okay, one, and then I have one, two, three two-bedrooms, correct?
Well, let's get the total count for that floor, remember?
Three, that's four, and then two one-bedrooms.
No dens.
No dens.
Yeah.
Okay?
So it's ground floor, one bedroom with a den.
Yeah.
One bed, or two one-bedrooms with no dens, and three two-bedrooms.
Right, that's six, okay? Then on the next floor, okay, I have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight two-bedrooms, okay? I have one, two, two, one bedroom with no den.
And there should be six.
And then six, I should have six with a den. I got one, two, three, four, five, six, six with a den.
Six one-bedroom with den.
Okay.
And that's for a total of sixteen units on that floor.
Right, sixteen, okay, now, the next-
Go to the top floor.
The top floor. I have one, two, three, three one-bedrooms with a den, okay? I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven one-bedrooms with no den.
Yep, and there should be two more.
And then two two-bedrooms.
Okay.
Okay, so one bedrooms with a den, I have ten, two bedrooms, I have thirteen, and then one bedroom with a den equals fifteen, and that's thirty-eight.
Yep.
So that doesn't match the comprehensive permit.
Excuse me. Yes, speaking. Can you call me back later? Thank you. Apologies for that.
Okay, does somebody wanna go back and calculate my correction?
No, I think that's right.
Okay, so now, the comprehensive, the one that was dated, um, back in 2016, okay?
So what, what are the numbers there?
Okay, uh, let's see, in Building C, it shows thirty-eight units, fourteen one-bedroom units, and four, and twenty-four two-bedroom units, okay?
Building C, thirty-eight, yep.
Fourteen and twenty-four.
Yes, and, well, so now-
Okay, and then on the new comprehensive, and then on the new comprehensive permit, On the new comprehensive, it shows fifteen one-bedrooms with no den, I mean, five one-bedrooms with no den, okay?
Yeah.
Here I got fifteen of them, nine one-bedrooms with a den, I got ten of them, and twenty-four two-bedrooms, and I only got thirteen.
Well-
Uh, one of the two-bedroom, he said, you know?
Cause, so nine of the two-bedrooms are now-
Yeah, but I'm going by this latest one that he just gave us.
Right.
Okay?
So I think, well, so this one, this is the first thing, one-bedroom with den, we've been talking about nine the whole time.
Yeah, and, and on this plan, I'm counting ten.
Yeah, and there's ten.
Which, finally, this one right there, this latest one that he gave us.
This is the same one? I'm working on it.
Dated 6/28.
Dated-
I mean, if I counted wrong, I-
No, I, you're right, you're right.
How many you have it on the first floor? One-bedroom dens?
On the first floor, there was one.
One. On the second floor?
Second floor, there was six.
I mean, if I counted wrong, I, you know-
No, I think you're right, Dave.
Three, four, five.
One, two, three, four, five.
Six.
Six.
Alright, so that's seven total.
So I'm count, I'm start counting it, I must, must make count. So I'm count, I'm start counting it, I must, after I count. I don't have my glasses, but this is two bedrooms.
I know, it's tough to read.
I think, this is a den.
Here's a den, here's a den.
You have a color pen, Toby there. Color pen, mark and-
Here's a den, here's a den. Here's one, so that's five. And there's one more. And there's one more here. So that's six on that floor. So that's a total of seven. That's seven, plus six. And then on the top floor-
There's three more. There's one, two, three.
One, two, where's the third one?
Three.
Three.
I think this, this is two bedroom, two beds. The den doesn't have two beds. This is two bedroom.
It says on here, there's a den. It says a one bedroom and a den. Right here.
Why don't it make a X mark? I didn't bring my glasses in.
Okay, so now, so that, that shows 10, that shows 10-
Yeah.
-one bedrooms with a den.
So you're saying that, that last one on the top floor, in the top floor, is actually a two-bedroom?
Well, then how come on the, on here, it shows it as, as a den?
Yes.
One, these two end ones are a den.
What does this thing call?
This one? Right bel-, right beneath it?
That's a one bedroom, just a one bedroom. There's a den.
That's a den.
Okay? And then there's two dens right here.
Yep.
Back to back. So that's, that's three, that's three dens.
Yeah.
That's what I had on the third floor, okay? If you go to the second, go back to the se-, next, the floor below it-
There's six.
There's one, two, three, four, five, and six.
I think there is a, okay, is it a den you say?
10.
Yeah. This is not a den, but what the computer is like.
Oh, that one there, with, that one there? That's a den.
There are 10.
It says den on it. I'm just reading what it says, den. There's those three la-, the ones on one side of it, there's three of them in a row. And then, on the top of it, there's one. Okay? Well, like I said, I'm showing 10 one bedrooms with a den, 13 two bedrooms, and one, and 15 one bedrooms with no den.
Yep.
Well, you know what? And I'm, I'll make a motion that we not approve this because the counts are not adding up.
Let's table it, rather than not approve it.
So let's-
Let's table it.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until we can get an accurate count of how many one bedrooms with no dens, how many bedrooms with one, one bedroom with den, and how many two bedrooms. Because the numbers that we-
I seconded. I seconded, okay.
Mr. Ali, so what do you think is-
Are we denying it? It looks like, basically, I had to go back to the hack because I wanted to work with you. I couldn't read it today because I didn't bring my-
So if you cannot read it, you know, we are, all three episodes are wrong.
No, what I'm-
You are talking, you are talking in the planning, oh.
I'm not telling you are wrong, Raj. Don't take it wrong. Did I tell you you are wrong?
Yeah.
Why are you so upset at me?
No, you said you are going to the hack.
No, no.
Immediately.
There is a motion here to-
To table this until we can get the, the correct-
Yeah, you can do that. You can postpone the thing, may I shut up another meeting which is correct?
That's the motion I'll make. That we table this until we get the correct number of units that are in Building C.
Right, and so, and so that, that's my question, is, based on the review that we just did, um, i- is there, i- is it immediately apparent to you what's going on with the number count?
Actually, what, what must have happened is, I can't read it, but I, I agree what you say. When, in, in a CAD program, what they do is, they change one floor.
Yeah.
And it's directly above on the other floor, it must have copied it and it must have forgot to take it out.
Okay.
It is a two-bedroom.
Okay.
So, it will be nine one bedrooms. It's well, spelled out in the permit.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't want 10, 10 one-bedroom dens, I want nine bedroom one dens.
So, can you do this?
It's honest, I can correct that thing and bring it here.
Can you correct that? Send us the correction.
Yeah.
We won't make a vote here tonight, and then we can finalize things the next time. And hopefully, we'll actually have a full board, which, knock on wood, that would be wonderful. Um, but, i- is, is that sound reasonable to you?
Reasonable, if it is reasonable, I-
Again, we want to make sure that we have the right plans, that everything obviously is labeled appropriately, that we have the correct count. So if you can also confirm with, you know-
What I'll do is, I'll tell him to come, everyone to count it, to come back with the right one.
Yeah, please. I think that would be, as you can see, I mean, with all of us, but we also want to make sure that this is an accurate-
And that thing also, I can change it, the label on the, label on caretaker residence.
Yep.
I'll take the rest.
That would be perfect.
What should I do on that?
You can, you can send it to the town council, right?
That's what I do.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just leave it as an office.
But that's a good point, Mr. Ali. If you could update that, so it no longer says caretaker residence and office, but then says, say, office, what, what did we say? Office and caretaker room.
Office at, no, not the caretaker.
Well, we want to remove the word-
Maintenance.
Okay. Maintenance then. Maintenance, or maintenance and office, or office and ma-
Not a resident.
Yeah, we want to remove the-
Not a resident.
The residence concept, as we-
It's a office and maintenance room.
Okay.
Cannot say, not a residence room, it can tell office and a maintenance room. Is that fair?
I thought we said that no, nobody should be living there.
We, we can, we can still include that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, nobody-
So you want to include in the plan, saying it's a not a-
Also, remove it.
So the, the bottom line is, you know, what I'm saying is, if, this is the one, if somebody lives there, if somebody sleeps there-
I had to come back to you, I told you.
Yeah.
We had this discussion, if I had to change that thing, if there is a need for it, I'll come back to the board and let the board decide.
Okay.
Is that fair?
You see, now, if you take this plan that was given to us on, that was done revised on May 5th-
Yes.
Okay? This shows 33 two bedrooms and five one bedrooms.
Okay.
Which is not, doesn't even equal to what the comprehensive permit says.
Yeah.
Okay? The one that he just, the one that we got in June, is these numbers right there.
Yeah.
So somewhere along the line, we need to get a copy, and we need to know which ones, you know, I mean, this is supposedly, this is the nine, nine one bedrooms with a den, but I'm showing 10 of them.
Yeah.
Okay?
And so I think you understand what that is.
You know what, I can bring that thing change, send it to the town council and send a copy to Toby, she can distribute it.
Perfect.
When is the next meeting?
October 18th. Good memory. Only because I know that October 25th is-
Can we have an in-between meeting that will be helpful?
Well, that'll be up to-
Even for a regular meeting and we are missing numbers.
Then if that's-
That will be really helpful.
If that's the case, well, we have to take in consideration, there's a holiday coming up in October, and then this town meeting.
While you are going for a Halloween?
No. Columbus Day.
Yeah, so, I would appreciate if you can do it.
My recommendation, okay, to the chair, is that to have the chair contact Town Council-
Yes.
Tell her what happened here tonight-
Yep.
-and what the situation is, and that Mr. Ali was here, and that he's gonna go back and give us a revise, that she needs to, that we would like her to get a hold of Mr. Haverty and, you know, discuss this, and to see, get her opinion on what we should, what our next step would be. And if we need to hold a meeting before the 18th of October-
Yep.
-then that will be up to the chair.
Yep.
You know, let us know when.
Okay.
But it can't be on the 8th or the 15th.
Okay.
Cause the 8th is a holiday, and the 15th is a, is town meeting.
Town meeting night.
Okay, and that's a very important town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Agreed. Yeah, I mean-
Thanks to the board.
How about 11th?
We don't know.
7th or 4th?
We're gonna, we cannot, we cannot decide tonight. And Mr. Haverty.
I'll, I'll tell you what would help facilitate, though, is, I mean, the quicker you can change this and get-
I'll have this thing email to you tomorrow.
Okay, so, that would help. All right, so the motion was to table this until we get-
Dave, can I tell you something? Why don't you make it clean? Make the clean project. Make the clean drawing. It's been like-
The project is not clean, you're saying, Mr. Raj?
No, I'm not saying project is not clear.
Ah, that's-
There are-
Clean.
Clean means, you know, the document should be clean. I have been in this board, I have been in this, I'm talking to you several times. These plans, how many times it's gone through revision by revision by revision? When you say, you know, the arch- architect made a CAD error, I don't think so that's acceptable. The architect is-
He did it in your favor.
No?
Not acceptable.
You know, but the problem is, is that the two different-
It's going to be the binding document.
The one from May and the one from June, the counts are showing totally different.
No, what happened-
The May count is showing 33 and 5.
David, what happened was, we were discussing with the town council, and those were changed after that. There were a lot of changes made of the document in between this mediation.
I understand that.
Which you are not aware of it, because they were dealing with.
But in 2016, when the comprehensive permit was approved, it was approved for 38 apartments in Building C. With breakdown, was 14 one bedrooms and 20, and 24 two bedrooms. Now, I'm looking at a document that shows me that there's 10 one bedrooms with a den, 13 of the others, and 11 or 14 of the other. It then, the numbers are not jiving. So that, that's, that's the, that's the confusion.
All you need is 24, 9, and 5.
Right. And I want 11.
Yep, 24, 9.
All right, so the motion was made, I think he seconded, so.
Call. You need to call, the motion is there, second is there, you need to-
I'll, I'll in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay. All right.
All right. So, so we tabled it, we haven't voted on it. It's still an open-
Yep.
Item. And, like I said, I will, I will look into seeing if, if we can meet earlier than, than the 18th.
Yeah.
Like I said, what will help facilitate that is if, you know, as soon as you can get this to us, that'd be great. I'll reach out to Town Council just as soon as I can, hopefully tomorrow, you know, I'll be able to get in touch with her, and we can move this along. Cause I, I think, I think one thing we all are in agreement in, is I think we all do want to get to some kind of resolution as soon as possible. I think all four of us can-
Sooner than later.
Can agree to that.
And now, what I want to ask the board also, though, the heading is closed, right now for today. I don't want any more arguments of anything what happened in May of 2004, 15, 16, 17. This is the plan which you are working on it, and we should get it done.
Okay, I just have one, one, couple of things before Mr. Ali leaves. What's going on with the stockade fence between the road and the 94 North Main Street? Has that issue been taken care of?
No.
Okay, what's, what's gonna happen?
I want to see if the board can approve as it is.
No. I'm not gonna approve it. Cause that's not what was on the plan.
So, well, will we-
So, this is closed. Let's talk about that at another meeting. Everything is closed, it's all done.
Meeting is closed, I'll charge it at another meeting.
May, this, this meeting is closed, right?
Okay.
So we can talk later.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Ali, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good night. Okay. Next on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Not yet, not yet. I have a que-, I have a question. We got this from Town of Sterling about-
This is the first ZB, they may be having a first ZB meeting.
Yeah, I know, I've been on ZB since 2013. I mean-
They may be having a-
Is there, is there, do you have any idea, is there a specific reason why?
They, they may be sending it to the neighboring towns, maybe that-
Yeah, but we've never gotten one before.
I, I agree with you, we never, I think, I, us and other towns are supposed to be notifying the surrounding towns.
Well, we just, we just notified the planning board, right Toby?
Uh, the planning boards of-
Of the, of the towns that's, right, okay. So, when this came, I was like totally surprised, I'm like, I never seen-
Yeah, I agree with you, it kinda came out of the blue.
I can, I, I can find out.
Okay.
I do know that.
And the other thing too, is, um, this thing about, about Dr. Tajin, I guess, um, I don't know what's gonna happen next Wednesday. I know that there's a court date.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's some-
Do you know, is Mr., what's his name? Bentley is still going?
As far as I know-
That was my understanding.
Nothing was written. I talked to, I talked to the-
Can you please check in with the town council?
I'll follow up with Town Minister.
I talked to the building department today, and they've reached out to him and have not heard anything from him, because they have stuff that he has to take to court.